Start with me by saying the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the board of roll call, starting down by right.
Counselperson John Sherman.
Counselperson Brett Fire.
Mayor Jimmy John King. Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olga.
All right, all here in Congress looking for approval of tonight's agenda? Anything else from staff? You go ahead. Any additions or deletions here? Don't want to take nothing off, Craig?
I got nothing. Well, I want to take everything off, yeah, of course.
Looking for motion approved, tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion approved.
Second?
So, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, approval of council meeting minutes of the April eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Okay, we're off to the races. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next will be minutes of the street tour of April eighth of twenty twenty-five. Motion to approve, move motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
Questions for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it takes finance budget, you've got the accounts payable listing with the additional listing there, and if we have any questions, direct them to our finance lady, Kelly.
She really wants to field a whole bunch of questions, I'm like, we want to ask.
Just testing her.
I'll make a motion approved.
Motion to approve, we have a second?
Second now.
Any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. It's going to take us to motions in general business, and first item on our motions in general business tonight is the twenty twenty-four year-end audit presentation. We've been anxiously waiting this since the beginning of twenty-four. Andrew from Smith Schaefer Associates will present twenty-four year-end savings financial statements and audit results. All right, Daniel, Andrew.
Thank you, thanks for having me, mayor and council. Tonight we will walk through this PowerPoint as we have done in the past, we have sat down, I guess I will show you the cover that was chosen for this year's so, this little picture of the American flag in the city hall up there, so that is your cover that will be submitted with the GFOA or the the annual comprehensive financial report, as we have done in the past. So as we go through this PowerPoint, if there are questions that do come up, please feel free to stop. With that said, we'll kind of get into the second page there, our audit opinion is a clean, unmodified opinion, but we believe everything is fairly stated according
We know if you want to turn the podium a little, just so you don't strain your neck, okay?
Our audit opinion is a clean, unmodified opinion, which means we believe everything is fairly stated according to the gift is the highest level assurance you can receive on a financial statement. Our opinions are reasonable, not absolute assurance of the financials are free from material statement, as we do not look at every single transaction incurred throughout the year, but we take a risk-based approach and these selections based off those perceived risks and anything that we did test for select core testing, what did have adequate supporting documentation and support for, so the city's accounting records throughout the year were good standing. Also included in our audit, we have to provide an opinion on Minnesota legal compliance, which is about seven different areas of testing, conflict of interest, collateral for public funds, contract and bid law, among others, we did not note any exceptions in any of our testing, so we did had a clean opinion regarding that as well. We did sit down with members of the finance committee and management on April tenth and went through the whole actual audit and financial statement in more line-by-line detail. So tonight we'll take the highlights from that meeting and kind of put them into this PowerPoint as we have done in the past. At that meeting, we reviewed the financial statement, the internal control letter, GFOA certificate response to findings, since the city does submit to the GFOA for the certificate of excellence in financial reporting. It is done by an independent third party, goes through the financial statement as part of the GFOA, and there was a couple comments on improvements of the financial statement. There's four comments on it, mostly was related to expanding some wording on why revenues are up and down, so there's a lot more just documentation, there is nothing major in any of those findings, so we have made those adjustments in this financial statement as we submitted for this year. Single audit, this year there was not a single audit required, if there was not federal dollars greater than seven hundred and fifty thousand expended in the current year. And then, as I mentioned, the GFOA certificate of excellence in financial reporting, the city has received those each of the last seventeen years, so it just goes to show the commitment that the city does have to their financial reporting and being transparent with all the financial numbers with that. And again, we will help the city apply for that in twenty twenty-four with the financial statement. With that said, the governmental funds, the main, first one there is the general fund, there's four different types of funds, general fund, the main operations of the city, the six special revenue funds that are listed there, there are three different types of debt service funds, and then two types of capital projects fund, the city cap project funds and the TIF funds. Included in that city cap project fund, there's about thirty different funds that make up that city capital project funds that are keeping track of individual projects that's on. Next, we kind of start off with the tax capacity for the city of Stewartville, so its total tax capacity about seven million two hundred and fifty thousand, up about six hundred and twenty thousand from the prior year, or about nine percent. Going back to twenty fifteen there, it's almost doubled in the ten years, so the city has grown significantly and the property values have increased as well within most ten years. Kind of mirroring that same chart then, is the property taxes collected on slide five, so total property tax collected, four million seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, up about three hundred and fifty-six thousand from prior year, or eight percent increase. Property taxes collected represent about fifty-two percent of the total governmental revenues that come into this city, so last year you're at about forty-nine percent of the total governmental revenue, so a little bit more relying on property taxes for funding the government operations in the current year. Governmental revenues is going to be anything coming in the city other than your water, sewer and storm. Next, we look at your tax increment revenue, so there's two active TIF districts right now, the Alcon and Geotech. So in twenty twenty-two was the Geotech addition, and we saw the revenue increased in twenty twenty-two, and then the property or Geotech was revalued in twenty twenty-three and for the full year in twenty twenty-four, so that's come down slightly, down about three thousand, but bringing in about ninety-five thousand. On slide seven, then we get in local government aid and market value credit, so local government aid is another major funding source for the city. In the current year, brought in a million three hundred and fifteen thousand. First year in many years that you actually saw a significant increase, up about two hundred thousand in revenues coming in from the state. Represents about fourteen percent of the governmental revenues, twelve percent in the prior year. And then, I forgot, should say in twenty twenty-five, it is increasing to million three hundred and seventeen thousand, so they're giving you two thousand more after they gave you two hundred thousand more in the prior year. So now it's seen a big increase in funding coming from the state in twenty twenty-five. Governmental fund revenues, looking at the main sources that we just talked there, property taxes in the gold color there. Blue is going to be your local government aid, that we did see the jump with additional two hundred thousand coming in, and we look at the far right grouping. The group, second column there is going to be kind of lighter blue gray color, you can see there's a significant increase in twenty twenty-four, and that's going to be your investment income was up about three hundred and eighty thousand, so you did perceive a little over six hundred thousand in investment income this year, so the city was able to increase their fund reserves by just having their money in interest-bearing accounts in the current year. Total revenues were up about a hundred and fifty-two thousand from the prior year, mostly due to that increase in property taxes, and then the prior year also had a larger funding coming into the state for some of their road costs. Next, we get into your expenditures, so general governmental expenditures on slide ten, this is the salary and benefits, professional services, supplies, telephone, insurance, dues, travel and printing costs for the administrative and finance department and council as well. Total spent on general government, a million sixty-seven thousand, up about a hundred and fifty thousand from the prior year. The majority of that increase is related to the increase in salary and wages, was up about a hundred and sixty thousand, and engineering is also about eight thousand in the current year. So total general government expenditures this year equals about twenty-five percent of the total governmental expenditures. Next slide, then we look at public safety expenditures, total public.
Remember, there's two positions that we brought on too, that we didn't, you know, Sanders' position now is a full-time thing, and then with Dylan coming on, so even though it fell under that category, it was due to two new additional people, so.
Public safety expenditure then, on slide eleven, is going to be the law enforcement, contract, fire protection and street lighting, the main categories in this one. Total about a million three hundred and seventy thousand, most significant governmental expenditures, it is expensive to provide those services for the citizens of Stewartville, representing about thirty-one and a half percent of the governmental expenditures, so up about sixty thousand in operating expenditures in the current year. Sheriff's contract was up about thirty-five thousand, and then the fire pension pass-through, which you give revenue coming in from the state that you just passed through to the fire relief, was up about fifteen thousand, so that was the majority of the increase in the current year. Staying on public safety, we just break apart all of the expenditures that I just talked about. Law enforcement contract, as you can see, about eight hundred and sixty thousand, up about thirty-five thousand from the prior year. Fire protection and first responders, and the second grouping was pretty flat, down about two thousand, spending about five hundred, or three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and then street lighting was also flat at about a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So the fire protection costs were funded by property taxes, about a hundred and forty-four thousand, which was up about fifteen thousand from the prior year. Township contracts of a hundred and fourteen thousand, up about nine thousand, and as I mentioned, that state fire aid that has passed through to the fire relief, all about fifteen thousand. Public works is the next category that we'll touch on here, so again, a lot of this is the salary and benefits, improvements, parking lots, improvements, fuel and supplies. Spent a total of about six hundred and thirteen thousand, up about a hundred and thirty-six thousand from the prior year, represented about fourteen percent of the total governmental expenditures. The increase in this year was due to street maintenance and steel, street patching, seal coating and crack repairs, so the main increase. Library expenditures on the next slide there, I guess I should mention this, the blue color on the bottom is kind of what we consider your operating expenditures, the gold on top is capital outlay, so we're going to kind of focus on operating expenditures, but also that increase in the current year was related to salaries and benefits, it's up being up about thirty thousand. Total expenditures, just over four hundred thousand, up about forty-three thousand from the prior year, represents just over nine percent of your governmental expenditures. This is funded through, primarily funded through property taxes, about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, which is up about eighty thousand from the prior year, and then county contribution of about sixty thousand, which was comparable to the prior year. Recreation expenditures on slide fifteen, so this is civic center, swimming pool, summer programs, adults softball, grounds and parks, and then we also added the historical society this year, as that was brought on as a new function that the city is maintaining in twenty twenty-four. Total expenditures about seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, down about a hundred and twenty-one thousand from the prior year. Most of the decrease is related to some savings in the civic center, and then also the pool salary and wages are also down from the prior year. The capital outlay in the twenty twenty-four is related to finishing up some of the skate park and then also the pool channels and the the capital outlay in twenty-three, with the majority of that in the skate park. And we break down your park and recreation expenditures between the park, pool and adult softball. The park does have some revenues that are coming in on the left, and there's blue, lighter blue color, bluish gray color, about sixteen thousand for different park charges. Spend about three hundred and eighty-nine thousand in operating expenditures and about twenty-two thousand to finish up the skate park lights. The pool brings in about two hundred and six thousand, their operating expenditures of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, spent about twenty-five thousand on capital, on catering and little events. So you're actually down in the operating expenditures in the pool, about thirty thousand, down in supplies, seven thousand, salary and wages down about twenty-three thousand. And then the adult softball pretty much operates on the grid as well. Economic development expenditures is the revolving loans, TIF expenditures, professional services, and then salaries in the current year, with the switch from the CETA contract to bringing that in-house. So total expenditures down about forty-three thousand from the prior year, so major expenditures is going to be the salaries and wages about eighty-one thousand. This is down about seventeen thousand when compared to the CETA contract, so there's some savings on there, about ninety thousand in TIF payments and about twenty thousand in tax payments. Looking at the governmental fund expenditures that we just talked about here, so I can see the largest category is going to be the second from the right there, which is the public safety. Slight increase there related to some of the sheriff's contract. General government is the second, same, same as the prior year. Public safety, general government, recreation, public works, library, economic development are the same order of expenditures as it was in the prior year, not just kind of giving you, comparing them side by side to see where the city's dollars are. Next, we look at your general fund budget, to actual expenditures, so the blue column is going to be your general, or blue column is going to be your budgeted expenditures, the gold is going to be your actual expenditures. So first category there on our list is your general government, so over budgeted about a hundred and forty thousand, salaries and benefits were over budgeted about eighty-four thousand, and then engineering was over about seventy-three thousand. Public safety pretty much right out budgeted. Public works was over budgeted about eighty-four thousand to the street maintenance, but you do a street maintenance project every other year and you do a consistent budget. So last year you're under budgeted in that category, this year you're over budgeted, you just budget that a consistent amount every other, every year, and you have the expenditure every other year. And then recreation was under budgeted too, so total general fund expenditures over budgeted about a hundred and eighty thousand. General fund revenues were over budgeted a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so pretty close to where the city anticipated with budget, with their five thousand dollars, what they thought they would be with their change in fund balance from year to year. We also have the five other funds that do have budgeted actual schedules, this time the budget expenditure in that gray color, actual expenditures in the green, so the revolving loan, they had no expenditures, there's no loans in the current year. Library is under budgeted about eighteen thousand, volunteer fire in the middle, under budgeted about ten thousand, civic center under budgeted seven, and economic development under forty-four thousand. So all special revenue funds under budget as well. That gets us into the fund reserves, so on slide twenty-two, we look at your general fund reserves, the one metric that is used to determine the health of the city's fund balance is you take your unassigned and committed fund balance and you divide it by your total current year expenditures to get a percentage of how much your reserves are on hand. So the city did use a little, or is that about sixty percent, did decrease the percentage a little bit, but the city is still in a healthy position as they have funds set aside for capital projects that are needed. The total unassigned and committed funds were actually up about seventeen thousand in the first, first column of those, so did have positive change in the fund balance in the current year. Reason for the decrease in expenditures is we did have a little bit higher expenditures, they're up about two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, at about three and a half million in the current year. So kind of right in the middle where we've been back from twenty fifteen to kind of right in the average median of where you've been, up, down to fifty-two, up to seventy-four, so you're kind of right in the middle of where the city has historically been at further down. So still in a very healthy position. Library fund, so this is funded through property taxes, about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, up about eighty thousand from the prior year in property taxes. Total fund balance there about five hundred and five thousand, up about thirty-five thousand from the prior year. So in twenty twenty-two, that increase was related to some of the harbor funds, there was the American Rescue Plan Act, two hundred thousand that was put into this fund that will need to be transferred into the CIP project, now that they have their own capital project fund for the library. We'll move back into the capital projects fund. Civic center fund balance, have positive operations in the year of about eight thousand. Total fund balance in the civic center around about sixty thousand, up that eighty-five hundred, funded through property tax revenues of about fifty-four thousand, which is down about seven thousand from the prior year. Expenditures were down eighteen thousand related to salaries and repairs. Fire fund and first responders fund balance, so back in twenty sixteen, so we transferred the two hundred and forty thousand out of this fund and put it into their own separate capital project fund in the fired capital equipment, which is part of the city capital projects fund. Had positive operations of about twenty-five thousand as they're continuing to work their way out of the deficit that was back in twenty twenty-one, so they are making progress with increasing property taxes coming into this program. Revolving loan fund, non-working loan that were issued in twenty twenty-four, about three hundred and seventy-two thousand, they're available for future loans, about eighty-six thousand outstanding in loans that are being collected. Economic development fund, positive operations, again about three hundred and fourteen thousand, up from the prior year, about forty-five thousand, so positive operations. The city did discontinue the contract proceeded twenty twenty-four and brought in internal staffing for the EDA, so that fund is still operating well. City capital projects fund, so this year we did break out the library capital project fund, it was becoming a significant chunk, so we have to combine the city cap projects fund and the library capital projects fund, this brings you to that three million two hundred and seventy-three thousand. So the blue is just going to be your city capital projects fund, so you can see that we added about five hundred and twenty thousand to your typical, regular city capital projects funds, water funds set aside for future capital, future street projects, future clear capital, future just needs of the city. And then the gold is the library capital this year, up about a million dollars as they were we have a slide on the next slide to break that out, so total major capital expenditure improvements in twenty twenty-four. The twenty twenty-three project's finishing that up, the twenty twenty-four project bought a power truck and three different vehicles. So the next slide then, on slide twenty-nine, is just the library projects fund, so about a million one hundred and seventy-five thousand, same aside for the future library capital projects fund, funded with property taxes about two hundred and sixty-three thousand, interest earnings of five hundred and eighty thousand, donations of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, that expenditures of about thirty-one thousand. That gets us into the debt service fund, so there's three special assessment bonds that are being currently paid through special assessments. Twenty sixteen is paid off in twenty twenty-six, it's got five hundred and ten thousand, twenty seventeen's got about eighty, or seventy-nine thousand left on, that's paid off in twenty twenty-seven. Twenty nineteen's paid off in twenty thirty at about two hundred and seventy, so it is the lowest outstanding debt that the city has had in the last ten years of the current year. There's also some general obligation bonds, so these are the ones being just funded through property taxes and referendum levies. Swimming pool have about two hundred and sixty thousand left on and paid off in twenty twenty-six, the twenty twenty-one A tax abatement, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand paid off in twenty thirty-eight, and then the twenty twenty-one A, twenty twenty-four, paid off in twenty thirty-three, so. All these bonds are being paid timely and add equipped reserves, the general obligation utility revenue, so the water and sewer also paid a portion, some of the safety bonds on slide thirty-three. This twenty twenty-six, eight, or twenty sixteen A, excuse me, is paid off in twenty twenty-five, twenty nineteen A is paid off in twenty thirty. Again, all these are being paid timely. The nursing home assisted living is paid off in twenty twenty-six, so almost done with some of these bonds, and then there's a fire truck loan as well, on page thirty-five, paid off in twenty twenty-six. With that said, what we really get down to here on slide thirty-six is your future five-year debt service requirements. So you can see your principal and interest requirements, about one point one million in twenty twenty-five, some of those balances are paid off in twenty twenty-five. You're just about nine hundred thousand in twenty twenty-six, and then more of them drop off, so you're about two hundred and forty thousand for the next three years, so the city is in a healthy position there with the obligations outstanding. Next slide is the net pension liability, slide thirty-seven, so this is an actuary of determined number, since the city participates in a multi-employer pension plan that is underfunded, PERA, which the city employees are a part of. There's an actuary report that determines each city's portion of their underfunding or any entity that pays into it. So it's not a number that you have any control over, but it is a number that is recorded on your books, your liability for about six hundred and twenty thousand, that is recorded on the city's books. And then the opposite way, the net pension assets, so the city is a sponsor for the fire department's pension plan. They are overfunded, so there is an asset of about three hundred and seventy-seven thousand recorded on the city's books. Again, there's actuary that determines. Then there are the three enterprise funds, so on slide forty, the first grouping there in dark blue color is going to be your revenues, the expenditures in the gold color, the non-operating income expenses in the green, and then the net income in the far right in the black color, they're dark green, so. Total revenues were actually down about a hundred and three thousand, so usage was down, if there was a small rate increase. The main change there was the seventy-six thousand in WAC charges that came in in twenty twenty-three that did not come in in twenty twenty-four, so that is the main driver of the revenues being down. The expenditures were up about seventy-seven thousand, most of this is due to preventative maintenance on wealth free, spent about sixty-four thousand on that. Even then, this water fund did have positive operations of about two hundred and ninety thousand, so they are sitting in a good position. When we look at your cash and debt outstanding on slide forty-one, the green is going to be the cash of four point two hundred in the water fund, up about two hundred and seven thousand from the prior year, and the bond outstanding above the two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, so. Positive operations, positive cash flow in the water fund, this does include a four hundred thousand dollar transfer that came out of the water fund with three hundred and twenty thousand, they're going to the CIP for future projects, and then eighty-one thousand transferred to the general fund as they have been in the taxes as is done in the past. Still adding to their cash reserves and their payment of their own net. Sewer fund, again, the same first category, or first column is going to be the revenues, the operating expenditures in the gold, non-operated in the green, net income of four transfers on the far right. Again, there was a decrease in revenues of about seventy-six thousand, again, the rates were slightly increased, but usage was down. Main change for the decrease in revenues was that seventy-six thousand in the SAC charge. Sewer expenses were actually down about thirteen thousand, so they had positive operations, about four hundred and seventeen thousand from the prior year. Down slightly from the prior year, just with a little less revenue. Sewer fund, same story, cash in the green, positive cash of a million, four hundred and seventy thousand in cash and investments at year end, up four hundred and thirty-three thousand from the prior year. They transferred about three hundred and eighty thousand out of this fund, or two hundred and eighty thousand out of this fund as well, with eighty thousand going to the general fund, two hundred thousand going to the CIP. And then the stormwater fund on the last slide here, the cash fund balance of a million two thirty-seven, so they continue to add cash balance for their stormwater for the future pond management and expenses related to that. And just a brief summary here, the general fund unassigned and committed fund balance of two million one hundred and seventeen thousand, represents about sixty percent of the twenty twenty-four general fund expenditures, the general tax levy generated fifty-two percent of total revenues, while GA contributed about fourteen percent of the governmental revenues. Fire department has deficit reserves of about twenty thousand, but they did improve that by twenty-five thousand throughout the year, and this is separate from the city capital projects fund of, that's for fire capital that has six hundred and fifty-two thousand set aside. Revolving loan fund has outstanding loans about eighty-six thousand, but three hundred and seventy-two thousand available for future economic development loans. Total city cap project fund reserves of three million two hundred and seventy-three thousand, including the fire capital of six hundred and fifty-two, and the library addition of a million one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Total debt outstanding decreased about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Water, sewer and stormwater funds are generating sufficient cash flow to fund capital needs, service debt and build reserves for future infrastructure. And it is my pleasure to thank the city for maintaining accurate records of all the city funds and having accurate supporting documentations for our testing. It makes our lives easier and appreciate the help with the transition and doing all the information timely, so we appreciate it. So we went through a lot of numbers, maybe not quick enough for Craig, but if you have any questions.
Any other questions for Andrew? Staff, are you in there?
Just comments, just saying, being reciprocal. Obviously, we didn't have to leave that as much this year, but they've offered their help as we go through a transition. But a few things we did have, again, their staff comes back and helps us immediately, so it's much appreciated as we're going through project situations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Have a good night, bud.
See you next year.
Next under motions and general business, partnership agreement, traffic signal. MINDOT partnership agreement, city staff has been collaborating with MINDOT District Six on a partnership agreement, which has been attached along. This agreement outlines the commitments and guidance for both short-term, long-term improvements of Highway sixty-three Schuman Drive intersection. As you are aware, the city has been actively planning and working with local businesses and the community to achieve improved access to Highway sixty-three. City engineer Obernathy has prepared the LLP funding grant requesting nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars from the state. Total project cost is one million three hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, with city commitment of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-seven. It's important to be noted that if the project has not awarded all the state funding asked from LLP, or if the project is more expensive, the cost will be on the city. So council action requested would be to authorize Mayor King and city administrator Shimmel to enter into the MINDOT partnership agreement for the developed project discussion.
Glad to see it moving forward.
And then two points to bring up, while we have to state that if it doesn't come through, we'd be on the hook. But if somebody remember, a couple of you veterans, at one point in time, the EDA had committed three hundred and fifty thousand to just put in traffic lights. So they were prepared to pay a big chunk of this, and now if we get the state monies, really our commitment then is just twenty-five thousand roughly more than what the council or EDA had committed several years ago. The other thing we've all done with engineering staff, ourselves and MINDOT, they've come to meet with us personally. And so the district engineer was in on that, those meetings, that's the head of our district, and some of their staff people. And we've been given every indication from them that this nine seventy-seven that Jim has helped us with looks to be a pretty safe commitment from them, so.
So it says in the agreement that they want to get moving on the lights by August of twenty twenty-six. And then from the time of the signed agreement, you're supposed to move on to the longer range plan of the traffic control, which is only eight years? Who does that fall on?
So that is gonna depend on, well, that will be MINDOT and the city.
But so they then have only eight years to get it done themselves, I mean, it's.
To save that money to put in the roundabout, it's gonna be a double tooling roundabout. And it could happen earlier if developments on the east side of sixty-three happens, and there's a lot of activity out there.
It's to get it programmed, not to get it built.
To get it, just to have it designed, you mean?
Programmed.
What does that mean?
So the state has a ten-year budget that they lay out.
And the hopes that county doesn't take on a chunk of that either, it's just, it's all stayed for that, because it's sixty-three?
Highway sixty-three is a state, and the only lights would be us, so it, we are the two partners there. However, we have been talking about different things with ROCOG to look at in this area, but I can't make any promises.
But when they push forward and they do this roundabout, which I'm assuming by then it's gonna be like a six million dollar project or more or something. Are we on the hook for the roundabout feeding into Schuman and on the east side? I mean, we end up paying a certain amount, I would expect, right?
We would be cost participating in that project.
Cost participating?
However, that type of a project is more, is applicable for a lot of different types of grants. And that is really what we're looking at, is giving ours a timeline to be applying for the funding, whether it be federal funding, different grant applications. Not the city or the state funding it out of their, their usual funds, but to get that, those extra monies there to pay for that instead. So, and that would be a cooperative of both the city and the state looking at those alleys, because there are some grants that the city can apply for that the state cannot, and then apply to state right away. It gets a little complicated with some of the funding sources. But that is really, and that's, so once you are given or awarded funding, it's usually for five years out. So if we say it's planned, programmed in eight years, that's still five more years before likely we're getting the money to build it. If we're talking some federal dollars here. So the look is actually, and then to actually start it and complete it, fifteen years out was the thought.
Wow.
Now, if things go faster with development, say the east side starts developing and we.
Will we get our outlet molly, mean, in the hotel?
When we need to make a connection faster and everything, we need to be very conscientious of how we're working with those development agreements. Because we need to be able to accommodate for safety impacts at that intersection if we don't have the funding right away, so.
And are the lights, when you're coming south into town right before you hit the bridge and it's got the whole traffic maybe backed up, is that all, again, is that part of this traffic light thing already? Have you seen that?
Oh, that's for that fifty-two, the detour.
Oh, yes. It's like, I saw a red in there too, though, that they're all, apparently in, in the state guys that I've talked to, some of our meetings, I have, like the safer meetings, I have to attend through work and whatnot. There, some of them are all just super bent about putting a light in there still, because they seem to think it's gonna cause all these rear-end accidents. I mean, it very well could, I guess, but.
So our signal system is known, especially on a high-speed area, known to create more accidents. Until traffic gets used to it, but then you also have out-of-town drivers. But we will be putting in the, the warning lights that, you know, before you see the traffic light or in that time it would take you to get to that traffic light if you're going to speed limit, it knows that, hey, you're gonna have a red light, so be prepared to stop.
Right.
So that forewarning will be installed with this, the forewarning that you get at twentieth, actually the state will be taking that.
Taking that off, it's kind of the only sign I saw that.
Correct.
Because they assume that you're already paying attention now, because you've already have slid off for the first light.
Should have already been paying attention, and when this signal is replaced, this short-term signal is replaced with a roundabout. Well, then again, you're already slowed down and you're paying attention.
That's good, because you're going to fall over anyway.
So.
How's it make you think you're gonna slow, like you're paying attention because there's a roundabout coming up? You know how many people are gonna drag right over that thing? But they gotta do something, because all those trucks coming out of there, it's insane.
So they agree that there is a need for an improvement, and this is the compromise we have taken to for a short-term solution since neither entity had four million dollars to just put into it.
I don't know about that, the state had plenty of money, they just blew it off.
Well, there's a lot of fight for that money, we'll put that there.
All right. Any other questions? All right, council?
I'll make a motion to move forward with that.
We have a motion to authorize Mayor King, city administrator to implement MINDOT partnership. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries on to massage therapist. Xing Gang Zhang got its therapist approval. City has received an application for approval for massage therapist I just mentioned. For our license and will be working at Relax Body and Foot Spa, five oh one North Main Street. Home State County Health Department has approved the application, following a favorable welcome from the background check. Council action request would be approve the massage therapist application, subject to a favorable background check. This is the old quick trip? The, the county approve this even, are they on probation or not?
They are until the end of the year. There's two of them that aren't.
Hmm, all right.
But that was part of the thing, right, is they, part of the probation thing, they said you need to go out and apply, officially apply for these, right?
Yeah.
So it was to be inspected.
Motion?
Make a motion approved.
Second?
Second half.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Public Works, so. Public Works director has submitted the following names for approval, Jerry Newbauer, Mark Germain, Jay Clug and Maxon Maline. We will be using three on a regular basis and the other one filling in when needed.
Counsel? No, we didn't do, this will be the same number we had last year, these will be full-time.
Oh, I misunderstood you then, so then we have one, who is the fourth person?
These four are full-time?
These, these four will be full-time, we didn't have the other one as part-time.
And you have a fill-in?
Yeah, we didn't have a fill-in. But there's possibilities of other things that we may add. If we had one person ask to come back or whatever, we could possibly take him out of fill-in when he came in after these people have been notified, so I didn't feel right. Change of that.
So you want these approved as?
These will be the same as what we had last year exactly. Different people in different positions, but same number.
All right. But for motion?
Or make a motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. No. I do, most of them.
Yeah, because you're really savvy when it comes to computers. Watch this. Over. Those relaxes.
There we are. On to mayor's staff consult reports. Mayor's report tonight. City would like to send our sympathies out to the families of Barbie Koster, Randy Fabian and Marilyn Bronwell. But we'd also like to send our happy birthday wishes to one hundred and six-year-old Beulah Anken. Wow, she's still, if you read the article in the paper, she's still living at home, still doing her own thing, still baking pies, still, still needed Beulah. Congratulations, Beulah. Don't forget volunteers are needed to help with Red Cross, the Sondale Alarm Campaign. Check the Sturful Star for more details on that. Dad's Belgian waffle breakfast is next Sunday at the American Legion. My bunch of cheetah spaghetti dinner will be held the following night on April twenty-eighth. Citywide garage sales will be May eighth through May tenth. And then after that, we'll get the community cleanup days, and they'll be May fourteenth and seventeenth. Take a look around town, there should be a lot of people lining in this year, it's been, they're really taking advantage of the last couple of years, but we need to really take the full advantage of it. We need to really line up. Please take advantage of this program and let's get these properties cleaned up. There's quite a few around, but now's your opportunity, folks, just load her up and get her out there. And now a big huge thank you to Eagle Rock Bank for partnering with the school district and the donation for the Eagle Rock Arena. Thanks them a lot, that's gonna help out down there with their similar problems, so. That's all I've got for report, takes a city administrator report. Oh, I'd like to welcome Kelly Graball for full-time now, last time she was just kinda pretending, maybe, I don't know. Now she's on board full-time and she's already hit the books, so thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
City administrators report, Bill?
Reports in your pocket, and then just as you saw, again, you mentioned it at the last meeting, with the success of the toast and taste. And so I just highlighted some of the other fundraising that our city groups do. But the biggest thank you goes to our citizenry that helps support all of these fundraisers and all of the projects. And then, as you know, that fundraising goes right back to the community. So it's a huge thing or a nice thing to be in a community like ours that supports projects, the groups, the causes, so. Good place to be.
Let's not, yeah, one of us was also invited to council this Friday, we have a workshop, nine to eleven-thirty, correct? Fire Hall?
Correct.
Right here.
Fire Hall.
Fire Hall. That takes us to the finance officer report, Kelly.
Norquardt at this time.
She's got that.
Oh, that's good.
And that's how it goes, man. Public Works director report?
Reverse there, I don't want to update the streets we will be in at the end of this week, maybe the beginning of next week, and then we'll get started on streets we can live. It hasn't been an issue, the terrible issue that I know is any complaints.
So whatever you were waiting on ended up being favorable, like for us? Like, you said you were waiting on some ruling or something on, that whereas we might not have been able to use the streets.
No, that was the, that's for the.
Exactly.
This we ordered last fall, and it was, we were getting used, one of the people that were getting theirs had to wait for their new one. So we knew we might be without one for a little bit this spring, and we asked for extra money selling ours to cover in case we needed to lease one. And we decided we didn't salt sand enough to really feel we needed to lease one until we could get this one here and get used to it.
Well, the April showers will help clean it up a little bit.
Yeah, that's the bad part is, but there wasn't that much there this year, because we didn't really salt sand too terribly much, they weren't like all years.
Anything else for Sean, any questions or anything? I still like the job they got done with the doing all the parks out there, that's looking great, what the guys think. All right, city engineer, Jimmy, you got anything for us?
The CIP product has started for clearing and rubbing. Looks to be that will be starting more of a road next week. We will be accepting bids for legacy drive next week and bringing that to the next council meeting. That one, remember, we do have the grant from DED for funding. So that will be coming at you also. We did have a meeting, RPU actually called a meeting, and we are going to start meeting quarterly with RPU. Sean was in on this meeting to be looking at, basically, regional effects for water sources, so. Put that out there.
They are limiting the use of down the Jordan main, which is what most of our water is taking out. So you will not be able to drill into the Jordan main, which mean we might have to go to another aquifer in the future at a deeper depth or surface water, which a lot of that could change treatment in the future. So we may have to start treating our water instead of just pumping it.
So we'll say the DNR has limited RPU not to drill to the Jordan.
We've been, we are not close to our appropriation yet on what we use and what we've been. Byron and Rochester, Byron's been over the last few years, so both those guys are aware of this, because they've applied for. We've been, been notified, because we haven't been close enough that we're applying for any more wells or anything at this point. But when it comes time in the future when we do, we will need to probably, I'm gonna guess, drill into the rock for and see what water chemistry is there and what we're gonna have to treat with.
So the cost to provide water as we grow could be going up. Just something to be aware of.
Which can affect our licensing also, as far as the guys, what they're in here, where they're getting their licenses.
Yep. So just as we expand, that's something we have to be aware of, the water usage and where we're gonna get the water from. But like Sean said, we aren't near our limits yet, so we're sitting good. But as a regional group, we are going to be watching closely.
closely.
I'm already looking forward to Nate's report, because I'm sure that'll be a little more cheery than this, I guess.
Other than that, yeah, we're up for a busy summer.
All right, any questions for city engineer Jenna? Thank you, Jenna. That does take us to Nate's, the library director's report.
Uh, yeah, things are good. Sorry, I'm going to miss your council workshop, I've been planning for last year to go to the NFL draft, and so.
Actually, I thought I was coming with.
I, plenty, bring your air mattress, plenty room with my moms, so.
I'll tell you what, I would even go to a Packer and practice rather than want to go to a workshop, I'll tell you that, so.
Um, so, yeah, not a lot of stuff, other than what's in my report, we're going late on programming in May, as we work through the switchover and some various other things. Yeah, I will have a complete report of, of our complete schedule of our summer activities at their, at my, the May meeting, and right now, we've booked all of our legacy performers, which is programs that are paid for through legacy funds, and we want to get those done first, so that we can kind of sprinkle in the internal stuff, because it's us, so, you know, we're around, and so, we're not the jugglers or Marionette guy or all those things, so we, but there's going to be a lot of fun things.
Is your mom living there?
Yeah, yeah, east side.
What's she doing letting you stay there? She should be renting the house out.
Yeah, she's.
Maybe like taking every single property they could possibly get.
I know, but you know, she's eighty, and just wasn't really ready to deal with everybody.
Yeah, they could make, there's, they're making some good money, those houses that.
For sure. Yeah, we're east side though, so it's, you know, it's a little bit of ways.
Any other questions for Nate? All right, thank you, Nate. Fire chief, pool director, that takes committee commission boards, nothing from the chamber in the pocket. EDA, HRA, we had a meeting last week, we approved some more public renovations, it's going along well. Finance, anything coming up? No meetings, you have a plan, right?
This was the biggie today, so.
All right, library?
Nothing.
Cardboard?
We met last week, went over budget, talked about doing a community survey of, about the parks and stuff, and we had a couple of guys from the disc golf club, and they, they provided some suggestions to improve the, the layout of the, of the disc golf out there to improve safety, and so people aren't throwing directly at each other.
Personnel?
Nothing.
Line zoning?
Nope.
Public safety?
Nothing, nothing special.
Public works? Nothing ready? Or ROCOG?
Minutes in there, we're starting the review of the twenty-fifty plan, so, chapter by chapter.
Transit advisory committee?
No report.
No report, okay. No communications? Anyone want the open mic? Leave us with the last.
Motion, you have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?